First item is docket item 061422, 14519 Detroit Avenue. It's the Downtown Development. The development team would approach the podium, please.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I could just to jump in before we hand it to the developer, I just want to take a couple of minutes and quickly just remind everybody where we are.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We did have some more slides up at our joint meeting between the ABR and the Planning Commission. I see some new faces in the audience today, so I just want to take a minute to restate some of these things. So, yes, we have had our introductory meeting. Yes, there's been some conversations that have happened with City Council at this point, along with an advisory panel that the city had formed to review the proposals that have been submitted for the redevelopment of this site. But ultimately, this is really the beginning of the development review process. There are going to be a lot of meetings over the next couple of months, several months, with Planning Commission, with ABR, probably with our L-HAB at some point, with neighbors of Marlowe and Bell. We'll have broader community meetings. Just this morning, I was with the Downtown Lakewood Business Alliance to talk with them about the project. So, there's a lot of conversations that are going to happen over the next little bit, and this is just the beginning. So, that's why it's important for you all to be involved and provide us all your feedback so we can do our best to respond to that as best we can as we move through this. So, the plan development review process does involve really kind of a back and forth with our Planning Commission and our ABR. It's really kind of an iterative process. We are at the preliminary level, so we're at that 10,000-foot level when we look at the plan. We, once Planning Commission kind of sets us on the course of the general scale massing use of the property, it really gets kind of handed over to our ABR, and they'll start to dive into the details about putting some boundaries or some details to the finishes of the architecture, to the finishes of the site, to the landscaping and other things. It'll come back to Planning Commission, where they'll look at the direction that that's headed, give their blessing on that hopefully, and then we'll move back to the ABR to really put the final touches there. Ultimately, this will go to City Council, where they will be asked to approve and ordinance, adopting or approving the final development plan. There's a lot of things that we're going to talk about along the way. Some we'll talk about with this commission, some we'll talk with ABR. Sometimes we'll talk about both things at both boards and commissions. These are just a few examples of those things that are on here. We'll start to talk about these things this evening, particularly at a higher level. But ultimately, what the purpose of the plan development is to create an innovative development that's integrated with our surrounding areas, and then has sensitivity to culture, environmental, and economic considerations. It's a lot to take in. There's a lot of different tugs and pulls on this project, on this site, and we'll talk about those things. It's really about how do we find the balance with all of those different tugs and pulls to make this work. We also want a development that's consistent with our community vision. These are a few highlights out of the community vision. It's a pretty robust document. There's something in it for everything, but these are really the, they're really the kind of the key things that are in that community vision that pertain to this development. Caitlin did a really good job of walking you through the development objectives previously. I'm not going to do that again. I just remind everybody that there are development objectives that we put together in 2017 to help guide this development. We're looking at those every time we talk about this project. You should do the same and make sure that we're doing our best to carry those development objectives forward. And then last, the preliminary approval is spelled out in chapter 1156, 03 and 04. This is the first step, and as I mentioned, the final approval will come at a future meeting. Ultimately, if there's, once that final plan's approved, if there are modifications, there's a process for how we modify that plan. Sometimes that can be done at a quasi-staff level with the Planning Commission. Sometimes that requires all of City Council approval, too. But, once we've defined that plan, that's the direction we move forward. So, with that, I can hand it over to the development team. I have your slides somewhere, I think, that we can pull up and work through kind of that initial discussion. Sorry. It's like I've never used the computer before.
You go to window and then fullscreen.
Yeah, we're trying to get there and trying to get all the little pop-ups to... There we go.
All right.
Easy.
Colby Ternock, Vice President of Casto, 250 Civic Center Drive, Columbus, Ohio. Really, and Sean kind of hit the nail on the head, our main objective is to kind of start this dialogue, to get feedback, to help inform the plan and direction on the plan. In projects like these, you know, one domino falling has impact on kind of several other components of the project. So, that's kind of, you know, our mission to open that dialogue and come out of this meeting with some more formalized direction of, all right, you know, do this, don't do that, look at this, but if it has a negative impact, you know, this is a priority for us. So, I think everyone is familiar with the site plan from the last meeting. I apologize, I missed the last meeting. So, I won't kind of belabor the site plan, and we're happy to answer any questions. I think there's a couple of things that we would like to go through, and I know we provided some more detailed information on setbacks and all that stuff. But, really, kind of some of the main dominos, if you will, for us are kind of the greenway treatment and the garage facade, and how we approach that. And we have some slides at the back end of this that I'll have Ted Hardisty run through. Really, our approach to this has been a reaction to some of the feedback we heard from Council on some of the objectives for the project, whether that be kind of more passive green space, public art, or sustainability components. We saw this as an opportunity to achieve those. I know the liner units have been brought up. In our experience, the Dexter Project in Ohio City, where we did do liner units, the, I guess, the high level of setup of having the street engaged, we totally get. The market receives those units, not negatively, but people prefer to be within the building. That interaction with the garage and the street sometimes can be a negative experience for a resident. So, that is kind of our sensitivity to the minor unit discussion, and I know that we'll get more into that as we move forward. So, Sean, I don't know if you want to kind of breeze through these, and again, if there's anything that wasn't addressed in the first meeting. I do want to point out on the massing study, I think that covered walkway shows up as a bridge from the garage. So, that is just a covered walkway, as currently planned. There has been some discussions about accommodating more office, so, you know, naturally, if that was a decision that we felt was something that we could accommodate, I think that the appropriate place for it to be would be another floor in Building A. And that's something that we're currently looking at and working with staff on, but that would be a covered walkway. Another kind of domino is Building One and the approach to the Curtis Block. You know, the way we currently have it is kind of, in our minds, was a step back and a little bit more sensitive approach to where we started, not only to the Curtis Block, but to the Plaza, and it gives us the opportunity to really have a nice frame bookend to the Plaza on the western side of it. The sensitivity for us with kind of holding it back is really getting into that residential density question. So, the more we hold that back, the less density we have in that building, and, you know, where do we make that up? And it's always just that kind of push and pull of where we want the project to be kind of overall from a programming standpoint. But, in general, I think, as was probably discussed last time, you know, we took the approach of stepping density down from north to south as we worked our way into the more single-family residential neighborhood. These were items that Caitlin requested just from a setback kind of development standard analysis. Happy to spend more time on these, or if there's any questions, we can address those.
And just to clarify, part of this, what we do is part of the plan development, we have certainly setback standards in our base district. These all comply with those setback requirements that are in our base district. We like to show where we are by pushing and pulling off the edges of the street, particularly in the context of the single-family neighborhood that's in south and into commercial district around to the north. So, trying to show that we are trying to create some green spaces along the edges to, there are lawns up and down Marlowe as part of the single-family homes, trying to carry that a little bit more pronounced as we go farther south on the site, push out towards the street as we get farther north, and particularly along Detroit.
Similar, yeah. So, then this is just kind of quantifying those outdoor components, as Sean alluded to, and the various widths and distances, and kind of how we get that front yard feel as you work your way north to south on the project. This is just cross-section to help visualize the massing and the heights for the project, based on where the various buildings are massed in this current plan. Again, this has been a process that we've been through with the advisory panel and kind of got to these building types based off of various factors, certainly economics of the deal, but also the sensitivity to the neighborhoods and the appropriate kind of addressing of the street and feel as you transition from, you know, more of a commercial corridor into a single-family neighborhood. Okay. So, yeah, I think what, I'll bring up Ted Hardisty with the Edge Group to go through kind of our initial thoughts, and again, these are all just kind of placeholders to show what could be achieved, and you'll see various kind of options in the greenway approach. You know, we see a fantastic opportunity to kind of have this experience as you're walking along the street to engage with public art in a more passive way. Where that art wants to live and what it is is kind of something that needs to be discussed. When we have done this in the past in Ohio City or in Franklinton and downtown Columbus, that public art component ultimately becomes a public RFP that we partner with a local arts group to run. So, we, this certainly isn't committing to any design or any, you know, specific art piece. This is just representation of what could be there, and kind of from the, not only the user experience for the project, but the neighborhood experience on the streetscape. So, you'll see kind of three or four kind of components, actually, there's five components. So, for the screening of the garage itself, and if you're looking outside of a landscape screening, there's a couple of ideas. There's a mural approach, which has been done in several locations, and that can be a mesh mural, it can be a different fabric type mural, and that's kind of a more engaged, colorful, playful way to screen the garage. There are kinetic screens, which are becoming more prevalent, that some of them are just a metal mesh material that move with the wind, so there's a little bit of texture to that screen. I've seen good and bad examples of those. There's also kind of an approach where you could do an illuminated fin and have the ability to work with LED lights and kind of change that per season or per holiday or whatever that may be. That, again, has a little bit more of an artistic feel. And then there's the green approach, which we, as a team, like a lot. I think the challenge with the green approach in Ohio is that it's only green for so long. So, it's a difficult approach, not that it can't be done, but those are the types of things that we're excited to hear your feedback on, you know, and if there's kind of preference to one or the other. Within the greenway itself, you know, we think there's an opportunity either in the center of the garage or more towards the north of the garage, where people will be engaging with the office building and the Plaza, to have kind of a signature sculpture element, and whether that's an interactive sculpture. We just installed a giant slingshot in one of our projects just west of downtown Columbus, so people, it's kind of like your selfie moment, where you can stand in the slingshot and someone could take a picture and it looks like you're being shot into downtown. But, it could also be something more playful, like dealing, you know, having a reference to the lake and water, and, you know, it's, this discussion is more of, if we had this public art component, this sculpture, you know, where would we want that to live along this streetscape? And then, what's not really shown, but is part of this, is this sustainable kind of stormwater approach. That's really the elements adjacent to the garage. I'll bring Ted up because he's much better at discussing this than I am, but that's kind of the high level of our thought process behind all these variations of images that Ted will walk you through.
Very good. I think Colby did that so well that you don't even need to see an image. No. Ted Hardisty with Edge Planning Landscape Architecture, and I think what I'm going to do here on these first few slides is, and again, I think Colby did a good disclaimer there in terms of any art you see as a placeholder, I think, for scale and to give you all something to visualize and react to. A couple of things about, I just think, the soft side of this or how we're treating this. I get the series of slides earlier tried to illustrate these setbacks, these green setbacks we're trying to create to create this transition along Marlowe and Bell into that existing streetscape character. So, Sean, when, back on that image, you know, I think something we thought was important was to really continue that generous tree lawn. We're indicating this at 11 or 12 feet or with the idea that you're kind of matching that Bell tree lawn now. What we did do here, or suggesting here, is we slid the sidewalk so it is integral with those parking spaces along Bell, which I think currently you see those occupied fairly regularly with the Health Center across the street. So, it's, it really is starting to act like that more traditional retail streetscape where people need to get out of their car and step on a sidewalk. And at the same time, then, it's allowed us to create this 22 or 24 feet of green space in front of the garage. This indicates the idea of a significant piece of public art at the north end of the garage. I think if you go to the next image, you start to see that, too, and here you start to see, you see some folks sitting on a seat height wall to the right with that grade change. You know, we see this opportunity to have these plinths or these terraced planters that we do think can handle some stormwater from the roof and also kind of create this nice landscape buffer up against the garage. And again, as these plinths rise up, as you transition downgrade, they provide good seating opportunities as well. Here's an idea where, again, we could consider more of a significant art feature more central to the garage, and again, providing a little respite along the way for people to sit and hang out, and again, showing that character of 11 or 12 feet of tree lawn with that landscape treatment behind. And again, a view of how that could look and how you could really create some functional seating along that frontage. Colby mentioned a wide variety of things that I think we all can consider, and I think using some of this as inspiration, we started to drop these things into this facade, and Ted, I don't know if you want to jump up here and discuss that elevation a little bit, but you're going to see a series of different ways we could break up that facade and different ways we can animate it through public art.
Evening. Ted Singer with Dimon Architects. So, yeah, this is, these were just, you know, kind of six different sort of ideas or concepts for what kind of animation or public artwork or planted area that could go along the garage facade. And then, the next couple of slides will just sort of give a sense of, you know, what kind of scale and how that could be achieved. So, I think this first slide just shows a couple of ideas about whether or not, you know, you got a centered sort of focal point for a piece of sculpture, or if it's more at the north end of the garage. And then, you know, with potentially a mural or different types of art that can be dispersed amongst the length of the garage facade. Next slide suggests, you know, maybe a different approach where you start to have that center focus point and then sort of different options for what's on the north and south ends, whether it's murals or if it's more, the bottom image is sort of hard to read. It's more sort of a green planted screen with that sort of center art piece. And then, the next slide is showing, you know, what if it was some kind of kinetic sculpture? So, when, you know, the wind blows through, there's a movement and there's some, you know, sort of constant changing of what's going on as a potential idea for how artwork could engage the facade. And then, I think the bottom one was more about, you know, utilizing that sort of concept of fins and the fins themselves potentially being a means for integrating public art into the facade of the garage. So, you know, clearly, any sort of public art RFP process would, you know, would provide calls to various people and feedback, and we could sort of hone that with the public comments. So, this is just an idea of how we could use that garage frontage, if it's a sort of planted area, for sort of integrating that into the project in a way that would sort of animate that area without, as an alternative to providing liner units, which, you know, could also provide an active street front, but potentially takes away that opportunity for that sort of public art integration in that particular location. So, those are just some considerations that we're working with, and we're hoping to get feedback on that approach or not. Thank you.
So, I think that was the extent of our presentation for this evening from us. Happy to open up to questions or further discussion, or Sean, if you had anything further you wanted to present.
So, with that, thank you. I think at this point, we will open up to public comment.
Sure.
And then, we'll go through it, we'll go through the entire site from a preliminary review perspective. So, yeah, so, very good. Just as a reminder, as was mentioned previously, there was a May 17th public meeting, at which point, we saw the full details in the presentation, and there was opportunity for public comment then. But, at this point, I would like to open up for any public comment on anything that was presented previously, any scope of this project. And then, yeah, so, if you wish to speak on this item, if you would, please approach the podium and sign in.
We did not receive any public comments prior to the, written comments prior to the meeting, correct?
No, we did not.
Hi, Linda Barbero, Lakewood resident, 2249 Olive. Unfortunately, I missed the past couple of weeks of meetings because I was away. So, I just, I guess I just want to say a couple of things. Is there any way that you could go to that massing slide for me? I appreciate it. Thank you, Director Leininger. Because I, I feel that in a preliminary discussion tonight, it's good to talk about massing form, scale, density, setbacks, parking, maybe not as much, I don't think, for me initially. But, all of the massing form and scale issues, what I would like to say is, I appreciate that Building One above the Curtis Block has been stepped back. But, in terms of just these general design concepts of massing and form and scale, I just want to emphasize the importance of being in context and sensitive to the Curtis Block, which is a local landmark, and also being sensitive to the residential street, the commercial street on the north side of Detroit, basically the surrounding context in terms of when you're looking at scale and massing. I know, I know they have to maximize number of units, number of parking spaces, but I feel like in a general sense, that really is important for me to express, that there needs to be sensitivity to all of this context, and, you know, so that it is suited for this particular site in this city, not for just any site in another city. And, you know, it doesn't mean, it can also be like maybe a little bit more transitional, especially toward the Curtis Block and maybe toward the longest stretch of residences there across from Building One and Two. Perhaps, you know, just considering any way to make it more transitional. Those are the main things that I, I guess I wanted to bring up. And, you know, I appreciate the ideas about the landscaping and the public art, but I feel like I prefer to step back for a moment because that gets into a lot of detail, whereas I think this major concept of form, scale, massing, relationship especially to the context is what matters the most. And I, that's what really matters to me, and it's not just, it's not just about preservation, but it's about urban design, architecture, and planning for me. So, that's my perspective and where I'm coming from. So, thank you so much for your service on the commission.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public? If you would, please come forward and sign in. Let's see your name and address, please.
Hey, I'm Kristy Elliott. I'm at 1492 Marlowe, which is the fourth house back on Marlowe from the drawing and from the development. So, I just wanted to mention how much we appreciate the step-down on the massing for all of us who live back there. We went through all of the meetings. Some of you probably recognize my partner and I, Ben. And so, we went through all the meetings last time. Having the nine-foot garage or the nine-story garage looming over our backyard was less than life-changing, but, you know, you got to do what you got to do sometimes. So, so, this is great, and I also am curious about the townhouses that have now gone in where the single-family homes were on the backside. Not good, bad, or indifferent. I'm just curious about the change, that change that was made. I'm guessing it's just to make up for units that were lost somewhere else, which is cool. And then, also, too, I do appreciate, as someone who enjoys, I'm not a longtime Lakewood resident, but I do care about preserving historical buildings, and so, I do appreciate the fact that the developer is attempting to save the facade, because I spend a lot of time in Austin, Texas, and there's not a lot that gets saved in Austin. So, so, that's great. And also, the Plaza, I think we've got a really great opportunity to make that a really fun space, especially, too, for all of us who live in that neighborhood, right? Like, a cool place for us to be able to hang out. I like the step-back on the Bell side with the potential for green space. I think that that's really important, even though we do have winter. And so, I'm interested to see how that plays out and what kind of cool art we could come up with to put there. I echo the developer's comments about liner units. Folks don't tend to like to live in them, so, just as an FYI. Yeah, so, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Anybody else in the public to speak? Anybody else that would like to, feel free to come on, come on forward and get in line and...
Hi, Jean McKay, 13428 Lake Avenue. And I just wanted to let the Planning Commission know that there is a lot of community support for saving the Curtis Block. for saving the Curtis Block in its entirety. The Historical Society just held a three, four-day sale and I circulated around and talked to people about the Curtis Block. And 95% of the people I spoke to right away wanted to sign a petition to say, to save it in its entirety. I just wanted you to be aware that we also have over 200, so that was like over 250 people. We also have on file in the Planning Department, over 200 letters of, when the Curtis Block was up for designation, letters of support to save that building. So there is a lot of community support to save that building in its entirety. And I'm worried about that way Building One sits on top of it, that it doesn't seem like it's, it just doesn't do it justice and it feels like it could be harmed in that process. So those are my comments. I just wanted to be, make you aware. I don't know if the administration has looked into or asked the community how they feel about saving the Curtis Block in its entirety, but from what we've surveyed for the people that, you know, came to our sale, they were all for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Heather Rudge, 13926 Clifton Boulevard. I've been at plenty of these meetings, so I won't bore you with my same spiel, but I would ask the Planning Commission to consider really carefully the massing that is ultimately approved over the Curtis Block. I don't think any of us have an issue with something coming right up onto the back of the Curtis Block at the rear of the building. But to have the new construction sort of engulfing the roof and hanging over, almost hanging over the front of the building, like Jean said, it just, it doesn't do a historic landmark building justice. We have very few individual landmarks in our city and, you know, perhaps some of that massing could be moved back, maybe some of the parking garage gets built on or something in, you know, more internal into the site. But I would really ask the Planning Commission to consider having some of that massing pushed back on the Curtis Block or behind it. So thank you.
Ronnie, more members of the public? All right, very good. Seeing none, at this point, I'll close the public comment portion for this document item. There was one question and maybe it'd be perfect for the development team to come back up and address. There's one question and then I share a question as well. Somebody expressed some curiosity about the townhomes and how that decision was made, how that, how that's evolved and maybe how they're cited on the property.
So through the advisory panel process and the most recent round of conversations with City Council, there was a desire to have more for-sale product. So in lieu of the two single-family homes, this was an approach to achieve that goal. So essentially, that's what drove that decision.
And actually, why I have you up here, there was, there are several comments about the mass in the Curtis Block. I think this is something that we'll likely get into in our discussion, but if you want to, I know it was addressed a little bit previously during your introduction, but speak a little bit about how, if it's possible to pull that massing back at all.
Yeah, so we initially had the Building One kind of turn, turn the corner, if you will, to the west. And when we stepped it back, we stepped it back from that western corner and kind of made a little bit of a facade expression on the Detroit facade. Certainly, if we pull it back, there will be an impact on units. You know, I think there's still some study that can be done on how that massing engages and interacts with the Curtis Block. This was kind of not our first pass, but maybe our second or third pass at that approach. So certainly not, not our last, but again, trying to look at all the objectives of the project and trying to meet them all. You know, it's kind of one of those things that we need to get that residential density to make the project happen. And there are certain locations where we can achieve that and others that it becomes more difficult to get those. So, you know, if the conversation from a user standpoint, in our opinion, was, you know, do liner units but lose, you know, those units above the Curtis Block, we would say we're losing premium units of that corner above the Curtis Block and then we're going to have units that will be the hardest to lease and probably at some of the most inefficient to build and place of them as liner units. So that, those are all the things that we've kind of been, kind of looking at as, as we cycle through all the comments and various iterations of the project.
Anything else to add?
If I could, just regarding the townhome, so the for-sale, desire for more for a sale product was absolutely one of the items that drove that change. But then also there's discussion about adding more density to the project. And so that was also another opportunity to add more density. As administration, we like to transition from, to single-family, it held that edge. There's two single-family homes on the other side, but we also understand we're trying to meet a lot of different, I said this before, tugs and pulls on the project. So this was a way to address some of those tugs and pulls.
Okay. Well, with that, we have a lot to go through, a lot to discuss tonight. So prior to the meeting, through email, I did circulate a, an outline of kind of how 1156, the ordinance in 1156 is structured for our preliminary review and tried to kind of group things together to make some logic and some sense as far as just the overall structure of how this meeting will flow. So with that, we're going to, I'm going to, we're going to walk through that outline and we're going to cover the uses and then we'll move into building massing, then we'll move into circulation and access, which would include pedestrian and vehicular access. Then we'll get into parking. We'll touch on landscaping and screening to the, to the extent that it affects kind of where service entries are and so forth and how we transition to our, the neighborhood to the south. And then we'll discuss urban open spaces. We'll discuss the plaza as well as other open urban spaces. And then we'll move into utilities and amenities and then any other, other comments. That's kind of how we're going to move through this. And so what I'd like to do is have our discussion centered around each of those items and have the developer respond to some of the discussions, some of the questions throughout the city can certainly chime in as well on any of these items. So with that, we'll, we'll start off with, with uses and I'll open up to the other commission members.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeFoy.
Just as I did at the last meeting, I will be recusing myself from discussions because of my employer as the board authority. We may be involved with the final financing on the project and as a result, I will be recusing myself.
Very good. Thank you. It's noted. With that, that leaves Mr. Reeves, Mr. Sanderson and myself. So I don't know if one of you wants to kick off the discussion on uses or?
So I, I mean, at this point, are there any uses proposed? I mean, besides the office user, do you have any other signs or likely tenants or thoughts on who those might be?
We don't have any other tenants identified. I will say there has been strong interest from restaurant and fitness users. We are kind of engaging with various potential tenants and making sure that no matter what we do, the right use, especially on the ground floor activates the plaza and gives us the most opportunity to engage with the plaza to have, to have that lively feel that we're trying to create there.
Mr. Chair, if I could, regarding the question regarding uses, that's one of the things that we do owe the commission as a, basically a use list. We've talked generally about the first floor of Building One and Building A being basically retail and commercial uses that we would find in our C1 district. These portions of this property are zoned, or most of this property is zoned, excuse me. The upper floors in Building A would be office and we have some zoning code guidance that we can pull that out and define that list a little bit better. The rest then of the balance of site would be probably a combination of multifamily, we have multifamily, I think it's high density or high-rise or multifamily, low density or low-rise, the combination of those uses. But that is one of the things that we have on our checklist that we gave to developers this morning along with the plat, the Plumery Plat, that we need to get to you for your next meeting. But generally, that's, those are the uses, those are the locations, and we'll add some color to that as we go deeper into this process.
Well, the, so this is a, this is a PUD, is that correct?
Lakewood's version of a PUD. It's a planned development, so it functions similar to a PUD. There's a little bit of variation from what I think we traditionally think of a PUD.
So the, but the uses will come from the base zoning districts, right?
They actually can come from any district, but generally, yes, they'll, they'll rise from the base zoning, which is C1, but then we can also grab into any zoning that's within our, within our zoning code, or any uses are within our zoning code.
You know, I recognize at this point, you don't have a lot of end-users identified, but if you could maybe discuss specifically the commercial retail spaces in Building A and Building One and how, how you envision those spaces accessed and divided and compartmentalized? Are they accessed from the plaza side? Are they accessed from other side streets? And where is the office, office main lobby located?
Sure. And I'll let Ted probably to speak to some of the grading issues that we're looking at with, in particular, Building One. The unique opportunity here is to have users have frontage on Bell and Marlowe and also the plaza. And we've seen that done successfully in several projects and it's really a unique opportunity to then engage the plaza and activate it. And that's why it's important for us to get users that are excited about having the opportunity to not only be on the plaza, but to be able to utilize the plaza for various things, whether that's an outdoor patio or other program, programming related to their use. Building One does have some tricky grades and I'll let Ted talk about the existing grades and what we're kind of studying along Detroit. And then as you go from north to south, that building along the street frontage does sink, the finished floor does sink. Along the plaza side, it holds a full height, but there are some unique conditions in there that, I'll let Ted run through.
So as Colby mentioned, you know, the intent is for there to be access and entrances on all frontages. Obviously, Building A has a lot more flexibility in terms of frontage on Bell and the plaza. The Detroit frontage is, is more of a walkway, so, you know, there could be some minor spill out space, but it's primarily with Building A, the, the retail frontage is sort of envisioned on, on Bell and the plaza and the office lobby is located at the sort of central south end of the building. So where you see the sort of elevator core, that would be the sort of office lobbies that would be accessed either from the plaza or from the south, from the parking garage. Building One, on the other hand, you know, the grade is starting to slope up as you go west, east and then from north to south, it's also sloping up. So the, the floor level right now is set at essentially the corner of Marlowe and Detroit. And then, you know, as, as the plaza or as Detroit sidewalk moves west, it does, the grade does step down, you know, 18 to 20-ish inches. So we're pulling out that floor level from, from the building out into that plaza, which kind of creates a sort of raised area and sort of indicated by a few steps spilling back out onto the Detroit sidewalk. And then as the plaza grade goes from sidewalk to the south, it slopes at a fairly gradual pace, but allows you to transition back to that, that main floor level. And so all of the west side of Building One's commercial space would be essentially at grade or slightly above grade with a, you know, walkout and that would actually provide the ability to, to then enter back around at that level to, to create an accessible pathway from the Detroit through the plaza to a potential frontage on the west face of the sort of revised or renovated Curtis Block. And then what's not shown in this particular site plan yet is where we pulled Building One's sort of north end, where we kind of shifted it to the west, that creates a little bit of space between the back corner of the existing Curtis Block and, and the face of the building where we can facilitate some steps down in a ramp in order to provide sort of entry space to that commercial space as well from Marlowe. So because the sidewalk slopes, you know, you're probably, you know, another 18 to 24 inches higher than that floor level by the time you get to where that tree kind of is. And then it continues to slope up as you move further south. So there's still the opportunities for windows on that Marlowe frontage, but the sill height would obviously move up as, as grade increases. But I think with the entirety of the western frontage of that commercial space being at grade and still having decent opportunity for windows into the commercial space as you move south on Marlowe, we think it'll provide for, I think, a, a good usable commercial space for that entire space. And then, you know, we're still looking at servicing and how we're going to manage some of those practical applications. We have some ideas how we could deal with that because the other, if Sean, if you scroll down a little bit, the other sort of servicing from the retail uses would be sort of along that, next to that covered walkway between the garage so that, you know, you could envision a trash truck could turn in and into that service drive and come and pick up trash kind of internal to the site and also be in proximity to some of those commercial uses at the base of Building A and then exit the site without having that happen on the, the street side. But if there's a restaurant or commercial use in the sort of Curtis Block portion of Building One, you know, you might need a different servicing strategy to, to manage that rather than having to truck all that trash all the way down to the, to that area. So, but in general, I think that there's a, we've got some more detailed plans we're working through in terms of dealing with all the various grades and, and slopes and things, but I think at least where we are right now, we, we feel pretty confident that we can manage those commercial spaces and they can be active and functional as well.
Just a, one point, one clarifying question. You may have said and I missed it, but the Curtis Block, you're not showing any arrows, entrances off of Detroit. Is that accurate, that you're not, would not have any entrances to those retail spaces off of Detroit?
I think we're showing one at the corner, which is kind of where one of the main entrances is, is currently. So that's, I think we're not, because the elevation of that sidewalk is continuously sloping, there's, it would be difficult to maintain multiple accessible entrances along that frontage. That's one of the sort of current problems with the Curtis Block is that the floor level in the existing building actually changes because it's actually kind of multiple buildings to some extent divided by firewalls. So the floor level is not consistent and each entrance has, you know, a six to eight-inch step at the entrance point, which obviously doesn't meet the accessible entry requirements. So the thinking, at least right now, is we're setting the floor level to have the primary entrance on the corner and then it could also have entrances on the western side from the plaza in order to provide accessible entries. And depending on the use, you know, we, we see probably that plaza side potentially being the most sort of activated in some ways, but, you know, we don't have a specific tenant or, or plan yet, so that's subject to change depending on how that space gets subdivided or not.
Mr. Chair, can I ask clarification? Mr. Chair, can I ask clarification?
So because of the what's going to happen with the floor grades inside the Curtis block, it of course makes the, what you just described, it makes those, those five bays, those commercial bays that face Detroit practically difficult to use for accessibility and other requirements. But the commercial bays, from an aesthetic standpoint, they will still exist. They will still be there, they just will not be in use.
Correct. They wouldn't be entrances, they would be essentially windows into the commercial space in their current state. So they'd just be fixed instead of operable doors.
Interesting concept, having the retail spaces accessible from the side streets as well. I think that makes sense, a lot of sense for restaurants. I think that you'll, you'll get probably restaurant operators that would support something like that. Retail operators might be more, a little bit more challenging. They seem to want to have one single point of access that, you know, they can snap. I'm curious, is there any portion of this development that's designed with future growth in mind? I think already you mentioned, potentially you were already considering adding a, as part of the development, another office floor. Is there any other portion of the garage or otherwise that would plan for future vertical growth?
Currently, there, there, there is not. We have kind of identified, at least from a, a cost standpoint, what it would take to do that for the garage. There are certainly other considerations beyond costs for that future overbuild of the garage and the disruption of current tenants and commitments to the office user and their parking spaces, et cetera. But we don't currently have that shown. But we have kind of just through the various iterations provided that information of, of what it would take to get there.
And I heard you correct, though, that you are contemplating a fifth floor of Building A.
We, we are analyzing that right now. But again, it's the domino effect because it's going to be parking and what, what that means. And that's the kind of the constant challenge.
Just to add some color to that, those are just some plumbary conversations. Given, we've, we've continued to have discussions about the, the intensity, the density of the site. Speculative office right now has, has challenges. It had challenges before the pandemic, it has challenges probably more so today. We are having conversations though about how can we engage, is there a way that we can engage more office in the site? That was a priority of council that's at Portus too. It's always been our priority. So we're continuing to have that. But as Mr. Turner just said, there are, there are, what does that mean? Right now, we have a garage that's sized for four stories of, or three stories of office. We had a floor of office that adds, or we had adds probably a floor of parking or half a floor of parking. So there are some trade offs with that. And how do we, how do we absorb those costs if we're, we're struggling with them now? We're having conversations, we're hoping to bring that through. No matter what we do with this plumbing development plan, and this will be true of the found development plan, we always want to maintain flexibility so that this project can be resilient and adapt as economies change, as time changes. Whether it's in the short term while we're in this process or if that's long term as, as this project moves. And so we want to make sure whatever we set up for, for zoning requirements, I know talking about superstructures or garages, another thing that's a whole other conversation. But from a zoning standpoint, making sure we maintain as much flexibility as possible to do other things. Even if a liner building isn't the direction we go right now in the garage, don't, don't do anything that would preclude that from happening in the future. Make that, allow that to happen in the future if the market's conditions are right or change or whatever might happen sometime that we're not foreseeing right now.
That's great. And I, I think I, I'm broadly in support of higher density. I think it's appropriate. I think, I think there's room for greater density on the site. And, and I think it's appropriate to add a fifth floor to Building A. So that would be my direction. I'm not sure all the colleagues agree, but I would be in support of a fifth floor on the Building A.
Yeah, I think I would be, I would be as well. I think there's been a lot of community concern about the way that the Building 1 interfaces with the Curtis block along the Detroit facade. I personally think that it's, you know, pretty special that we're getting to save the facade at all. That doesn't happen in a lot of places. You know, a lot of times those buildings just end up coming down. So, so the fact that we're able to save the facade is, is excellent. If there's a conversation about whether that building, the upper building needs to be pulled back from the Detroit side, I think it would be okay if that happens. I don't think that it necessarily needs to. I think, you know, as a pedestrian on that sidewalk, you're going to understand that that is the addition. And, you know, I, I trust that the historic board is going to do a good job on, on making sure that that interfaces correctly. But I, I guess I just, when we're talking about massing, I think that was the one thing that I heard the most about. And then I think I'm okay in either direction.
All right, with that, I think we've kind of actually progressed into the massing discussion. Mr. Sanderson, unless you have any further discussion on uses, we can move into.
Not on uses, no.
So for the building massing, I do want to kind of take it building by building because there is a lot of, so we're not jumping all over the place, that we can kind of focus our thoughts. And with that, let's, let's start with, with Building A. Any discussion on the massing of Building A? We already touched on the potential for an additional floor.
I, I don't have a problem if the fifth floor was added, but I do know that it's a real challenge in urban areas to, to get occupancy up. And so the lenders are pretty pessimistic about spec office, as Sean said. I would like to see a strong consideration of a walkway to kind of help separate traffic from people coming in and out of the office building as opposed to people using the rest of the ground floor uses. And that's just as much a convenience factor as anything. Other than that, I think it's a, it's a good concept and it's in the right location.
Mr. Sanderson, you're referring to a, a raised walkway connecting the garage to building.
Second floor, up off the, the grade level.
I'm a bit of a difference of opinion on that, having worked at Cleveland State and attended Cleveland State for a number of years. Those covered walkways and looking at the way the clinic has evolved, they do take foot traffic off of the street. I, I, from what I see, and that it's, you know, there, it's those opportunities to interact with folks and, and potentially, you know, pick up a cup of coffee on your way into the office. And I don't know, I, I, you know, I understand the, to kind of try to separate those uses. But I think, I do think the current layout, there isn't, they're not, there's no vehicular traffic that would be going underneath that bridge. So I don't know that it's entirely necessary.
We're both entitled to our opinions.
Yeah, I guess if it was, if it was a hotel and there was business, business users, I, I may lean a little bit towards Bill's. And I understand where you're coming from, Bill. I'm not sure that I have a strong opinion either way. It's such a short, it's such a short walkway to begin with. It's when those walkways start interacting with, with the, the public right of ways. That's where I, that's where I'd have a bigger concern.
I have some comments with regards to the massing of Building A on the north side of the building. I like the idea of pulling back the first floor so you can have that covered, a covered area. You know, one of the challenges with just the desire to have the Building A close to fronting Detroit as possible is that it kind of creates the, the plaza is just kind of tucked away. You blink, you miss it. So I think that helps with that line of sight, kind of opens up the line of sight to the plaza, which is helpful. I think, I think there's, I think you're, if I remember looking at the floor plans, I think you're pulling it back about halfway between the two columns. I wouldn't mind seeing it pulled back a little bit more, maybe chamfered, you know, at a, at an angle to open up into the plaza to get that line of sight back into the plaza. You know, I, I know there's the, the risk of creating this cavernous space under the plaza. Maybe it's a two-story, you know, maybe it's two stories. I don't know. I, I know you, that starts to impact your leasable square footage and so forth. But I think kind of some sort of, if, if, the intent is really, and this was mentioned at the May 17th meeting, is to have potentially restaurant operators having seating there for, you know, and inclement weather be useful and helpful and so forth. I think you do need, you need that space, you need to pull it back to one, all the way to the full column. Any other thoughts on, on Building A? Let's move on to Building 1, the Curtis block. We're kind of going to work from the north of the site to the south of the site. We've already had some preliminary discussions about pulling the massing back of Building 1. I'm in support of, of pulling it back further. So it's just kind of to honor the Curtis building a little bit more and to, it's kind of, it's just kind of this looming piece. It looks like it kind of landed on, landed on top of the building. I think stepping it back a little bit would, would help the Curtis block kind of stand on its own a little bit more. I'm not sure if other commission members agree that, that that should be explored potentially?
I, I, actually, I disagree. I like the treatment where you've articulated the building back to the west. And if, to follow up on Kyle's point, as you're a pedestrian experiencing that building, the, most of what you see is, is going to be perceived as pretty far back. The blocking of the building to the east further makes that step back less of an issue where you get a lot of spaces, looking at it from the west, which in that instance, there's a, there's a broad area. So again, I don't think you read that that core piece on top is actually as looming as it appears in the block drawing. And I will also say, if you look at the elevations, I think the treatment actually is very complimentary to the building and obviously enhances the use of the building, which is always important. So you're maintaining the street scape and integrity, but actually providing a use that makes it both economically viable and I think a nice addition. So again, if you look at the 360 of the elevations, I think especially from the west, it does a really nice job. And since the plaza is open to the west, I think it's important as you travel down Detroit to be able to experience that in a way that makes sense. And when I look at that elevation, it looks like it was, you know, designed fresh and new and not a combination of new and old.
Any thoughts?
Well, I, yeah, you know, I, I, I certainly, I certainly respect and understand the preservation perspective of the Curtis block. And, and pulling that Building 1 back further would, would further enhance what, you know, the great thing that they're doing, which is saving the facade. But I think it's more important that we save the facade. And if so, if bringing that, those upper stories closer, getting those premium units, which are important to the project's, you know, financial viability, I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of doing that. So, so again, if, if they are to go away for some other reason, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be heartbroken. But, but as it stands, I'm, I'm okay with the way that it's presented.
Mr. McDermott had expressed in the, in his written comments that I have before me that he, he isn't supportive of Bill of pulling those upper floors back away from Detroit. He says, or three through five should align with the rear wall of the Curtis block. My, one other comment with regards to the Curtis block is I know there was some discussion with the community through the May 17th meeting and other, other communications with council about the full, the full save of the Curtis block building. I've personally been involved with various development and reuse projects in my, in the course of my career. And I recognize the challenges with an existing floor plate and trying to build uses in to meet that, that floor plate that's constraining. So I appreciate the facade save. And I think it supports the intent and the reasoning and the culture, the community's desire to, the reasoning for the saving that, that, that corner, that complete corner, the facade. So I'm in support of the, the facade save. But I do think there's an opportunity here, and this aligns with our community vision with education and culture component. But to work with the Lakewood Historical Society to place a Ohio Historical marker somewhere on the site. And that's something that you could do that could, you know, talk about the streetcar era. You know, the, they would, the Historical Society would be able to come up with that text and then apply through, through the state. I think the deadline is, I think this time next year. So, but work with them and that's, could be something that we place somewhere on the site to kind of talk about the, maybe talk about the building, but talk about the streetcar.
Sure.
Any other further discussion on, on Building 1, massing?
Just a quick question. I wasn't clear, was the intent to have on the east side an entrance to the back of the Curtis block or?
There, Ted, if you want, there, there's a, a service corridor.
So I, here's, the east side would be on Marlowe.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, the ideas are in that. Let's see if this. In this area right here, the intent is we would create a, a set of steps and a ramp to facilitate an accurate entrance in that area as well. And that's one of the things that sort of pulling this face back gives us a little more flexibility to make that happen in a way that, that makes sense. And, you know, depending on how this commercial space gets subdivided, you know, you could have an entrance here. Obviously, you can have entrances on this side as well as this face here and then the corner.
All right, we'll move on to Building 2. I brought this up at the May 17th meeting and I was, you know, rather concerned with just daylight and so forth for the, the little park areas to the west of the building. And looking at the drawings further, it seems to be that you have a double loaded corridor there for that building, is that correct? So you need that, you need that space, that setback from the garage for light.
Yep.
How do you envision those, who's using those spaces? Are those reserved, are those, is that an amen to the first floor tenants?
The intent would be for that ground floor, first floor tenant, that would be their, their own private outdoor space. How that gets finished and that detail is still kind of under, we're exploring the, how, how to condition that. But that was the intent for those ground floor units.
So therein lies the, the challenge. If, if another floor of office space is added and you're adding another, adding another floor of parking, is, is that still a desirable?
Correct.
I guess it would be important on that building too, if there's going to be those additional units. I mean, they're not, they're not separated, you know, by a whole lot of space between them and the garage on, on the western side of that building. You know, how is that garage facade treated, you know?
Right.
Because they are going to be, I mean, that's going to be their, that's going to be their view.
Yep, yep. And, you know, it's something we've talked about kind of with that and something we're still exploring. You know, there's, there's various ways to, to do that. We've done it with, with landscaping on the ground floor and that's been sufficient as you get up. If there's some daylight clearance, people seem to be comfortable. There's been some hotel examples that we've seen that are probably poorly done with kind of a fabric mural that gets real dirty from the car exhaust. And then after a year, it kind of goes away. So something certainly to keep into consideration for this building and for the western facing units as, as we progress the plans.
I think it'd be important to not go with, you know, a cable wall or anything where headlights are going into those units. Something solid, something solid at least up till where the headlight.
I guess one other question I had, so the, the, the ground floor units on unit two, are those walkups?
On the Marlowe side?
Yeah.
So they're not, all the units are served off of the corridor and accessed through the entrance lobby? And there's an elevator and a sort of half run of stairs that kind of transitions the sort of grade elevation to raised floor level so that, you know, the south end units aren't buried too deep into the ground. There are those porch elements that stick off the, the building and essentially could provide a patio, which I think right now we're showing some steps that could allow people to enter those units directly. But, you know, obviously, they would still need the lobby entry and elevator access in order to provide an accessible entrance to all those units. So it's, they're not sort of exclusively walkup units. But where, where those units are, where. are, we're at least conceptually planning for sort of little porches and, and steps that would lead to a walkway out to the sidewalk. And I think that's, I think that's illustrated in some of the sort of renderings that we had previously provided and obviously we can share additional images.
Now, those, the ground floor units on the Marlowe side, you can access the sidewalk directly?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reese, I'm glad you brought that up. I think that is really important. I mean, that, this is what makes Lakewood so great, is just the engagement of the communities. And, and it actually was outlined, I believe, in the community vision about the importance of having renters be, feel like they're included and part of the community. And to have, even if it's not the primary entrance, but a secondary entrance or, you know, to be able to go walk out on your steps and, you know, reading your morning paper and say hi to your neighbors across the street, I think that's a really important piece. So I'd like to see that continue through into the final.
And just as a, just a little bit on the ARBs territory, but you know, we found that the, kind of the minimum usable depth for those porches is six feet. So if you can make them, you know, at least six feet, I don't know how much room you have there, but in my experience, it's been, you know, about the right number.
Any further discussion on building two? We'll move on to the parking garage. We already had a little bit of discussion about, and they presented new graphics for the, for the art and how that's treated. There was some discussion at the May 17th meeting about liner units and some further discussion today. Any further discussion on the overall amassing of the parking garage?
Would you like to discuss the liner building now?
Yeah, that would be a great time.
All right. I guess my first clarifying question is the, the 24 to 26 feet, is that all private property or is that including some of the right of way that was shown on the, the setback plan that you gave us?
I'll bring Ted up here. I, I'm not certain where that demarcation is.
All, all of the dimensions on the setback are from the property line. So it's 24 six-ish at the north end and 26 feet at the south end because the, they're not quite parallel, so there's a little bit of variation.
So I really appreciate the, you know, the time that you guys put into the thought on the, on, you know, what that space could be. I really do sincerely appreciate that because I know those are hard spaces to deal with sometimes. They're all, probably all the time, a narrow strip like that. But I didn't see anything in the, you know, the placeholder pieces that you, that you showed us that was compelling enough to me to allow for basically an online parking garage in, in the downtown of Lakewood, Ohio. Like I just, I didn't see anything that was there. In my experience walking around a lot of cities, I, it's pretty hard to, to do that and I know you know that. So I, I'll start with that. The fabric, I think, is kind of a non-starter. The Church and State Project in Ohio City, that, their fabric didn't even last two years. It's gone and it's probably never coming back. The Playhouse Square, the Playhouse Square building that they did downtown, the, they did kind of a, a metal mesh on, on that building and it looks like a parking garage disguised by metal mesh. You know, I, it didn't, it doesn't do anything aesthetically for that street and it's a shame because it's across from some of the nicest buildings in downtown Cleveland. I, I've seen the parking garage you were talking about in Columbus, that's along 670 with the, the LED fins. I think that does look cool if you're driving past it at 65 miles an hour. If it's on a residential street, I think it's probably going to be too bright. I, I think there is some potential there for something like that, but I don't think it's enough to activate that, that street in the way that it ought to be activated. You know, when you go north on Marlowe, across Detroit, there's that online parking garage and it's one of my least favorite places to, to run in the neighborhood. It just, it kind of just feels really dead there. And I know part of that's because they don't have any street trees. It's closer than what this would be, but, but the experience I think is going to be pretty similar. So to me, the, the liner building is, is kind of the right answer. I am thoroughly sympathetic to maybe those aren't the, the units that are easiest to rent, but I think with the right, you know, with the right streetscaping and the right walk-up ability for those things, that they could be very cool. We've seen them done. I mean, you guys did a great job with the Dexter ones. There's great ones in Columbus. The city of Cleveland, a few years ago, adopted zoning code for their downtown that doesn't permit online parking garages anymore. And I think that, you know, Lakewood should have that same standard, even if we're doing it through, through this process and not through the zoning code. So I, I am just really, really advocating for, you know, a project that's in the heart of downtown Lakewood, that's going to be here for 100 years, hopefully, that we, that we don't skimp on this particular piece of this.
Mr. Reese?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and knock me down.
Not knocking you down at all. I, I, there's much about what Kyle said that I agree with. However, I actually still prefer, because of the size, a, what I think can best be described as a linear park. I also liked one of the examples that you showed that had the center, the, like a little niche in the center so that that long expanse is broken up by a, kind of a resting place because really you're, you're traversing. There's, there's no other way to look at it. You're going from really a fairly intense use to a lesser intense use. So that, properly done and even potentially even programmed, I think it gives you a nice linear park. It, it's pleasant going by. You have lots of opportunity for landscaping. You're certainly sensitive for stormwater management and other issues that can be handled in that area. And I agree with Kyle that you have to come up with a facade treatment that's attractive and appropriate, but I think the landscaping and the park element for me makes it worthwhile.
I was looking through Mr. McDermott's notes and he didn't, I don't think he commented one way or the other on it. But in any event, I will make some comments. I agree with Mr. Reese that, that this is, what is this, about 250 linear feet approximately?
Sean, I think that one exhibit had a, I don't know if it had the distance on or not. Ted, do you know off the top of your head?
I think it's.
So, you know, I mean, this is, this is a major, major development and I've worked on several parking garage projects before and no matter what, what, no matter what you put, how you treat them, it's always going to be a parking garage. It'll look like a parking garage. And that 20, that 24, 26 foot buffer, while I appreciate, you know, the designs and the green space and I just don't see it being used as, as a park. I don't see who's going to bring, going to go hang out and have, have lunch there. I mean, you might get some folks hanging out there, but I just can't see just hang, just, it's not going to be a destination. It's not going to be something, you know, and you may be able to treat some of your stormwater runoff and your, fulfill your EPA requirements for how you're handling your stormwater through here, if not somewhere else. But I would really be in favor of seeing a proposal that includes liner units. And again, as I stated before, I think, I think this site would benefit from, from additional density and this would go to support that. I know it's, I know it'd be challenging to build, assuming that's going to be a cast-in-place garage and, you know, building those liner units up against it would be challenging, but I think the demand right now in Lakewood would support it. I'd like to see that further explored. Any further discussion on the amassing of the parking garage?
Mr. Chair, I'll just share, this is another one of those, those, those competing priorities, direction that, that the developer and the administration have been trying to grapple with. And so I appreciate the conversation here because there are, there are pros and cons in either approach for the developer, for the community, for, for everyone involved. And it's, there's, I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer. So when we can go back and address this and look at it. Appreciate the conversation.
Let's move on to the garden apartments, as you're calling them. And just for my benefit, I think you've identified, and one of the plans I saw is one, two, and three. You've got, is one on, one is on Bell, two, three is, two, I'm sorry, is on Marlowe and three is the center building. Is that right?
Yeah, I think so.
Make sure we're all talking about the same, the same buildings. I think it's, I think it's buildings one and two that line the, line the streets.
Yep.
So I, you know, I think, looking at where these are directly across the street from, you know, gable roofs and hip roofs and so forth, I think if you can find a way to soften those corners, that, there is, I think, the one rendering shows the building that's front, I believe it's Marlowe, that there's a centerpiece that's got, you know, a sloped roof. But if you can find a way to kind of play with the architecture a little bit to kind of, so it's not these hard corners, because you look, you look across the street and it's, it's a very stark contrast to what's across the street. Help with daylight and so forth and the overall, the feel of the building as you walk, as you walk down. Any further comments with regards to the amassing of the garden apartments?
Let me get to them.
Just really the center section of that has kind of like a, almost like a Dutch colonial kind of look. And if you use a similar treatment, I think on all of the portions, it doesn't have to be the same, but a similar kind of approach, that really breaks it down pretty well, brings the soffit line down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think, I don't think I have any comments on, on those, Mr. Chair. I guess I do have one actually on the, so I guess it's the, the units that are on the, that have the sidewalk running between them, just those garages, they'll, you know, they'll be visible from that sidewalk, from the, from the porches of, of the other units. Yeah, those right there. So just a, just a screening wall at the edge of that driveway and then down it to block the, you know, that view into the parking court from those units that are on the east side to the, to the garage entrances on the, of the units that face the other, the other street. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so on the north end of that, yeah, right there. Just so those, so those units right there, they have their porches facing the pool, but you know, the one will have the view of the, kind of the, if you're looking west, you'll be looking into those parking garages. So just some sort of screening element for them there and then along the sidewalk too. So they have kind of a pleasant experience out to the, out to the west street.
One for, one further question on the garden apartments. Would those, do you envision something similar with the first floor patio space? Is that, is that the primary entrance point to those units or is that a secondary entrance?
That, that would be a.
I see it in, I see it in the rendering.
Yeah, that would be a secondary entrance as, as designed. But yeah, I think the concepts for those east and west facing units would be, would be the same.
I'd like to see that continue there. If we could, a little bit of further discussion on the townhomes. I don't have any specific comments. I saw, Mr. McDermott had a comment. He's asking for a study of the placement of the seven townhomes as needed. Current orientation buries the four townhomes in the rear of the site. Consider a study where all seven homes face northward with an end cap on, along the Bell frontage designed in a way to present Bell as a corner unit. Contrary, a study keeping the three townhomes fronting Bell and showing the four proposed townhomes turned 90 degrees clockwise and facing east to green space, green space maybe of Bell. Seven townhomes could be fed by a central motor corridor.
Actually, I've done, I've done a lot of townhome work in, in my career and, you know, I think that the way that you've laid them out is, is probably as good as you can possibly get on this.
Yeah, I think, I think we were relying on Demont's kind of experience and, and other urban conditions. I understand Mr. McDermott's point and I mean, we're happy to, to look at other options if that was the desire, but we kind of felt as a team that this was the, the best approach for the seven unit concept.
Just so you get comment, I agree. I have done a townhouse or two and I, I think this is very workable. In fact, if you wanted density, you could probably play with the sizes and get a couple more in there, but you know, now you're really driving something that's not going to give you as much density as it is. It will bring more for sale housing though, and if that's a goal, then, you know, it will give you a variety of products there. You could get a little more aggressive.
I'm, I'm in support of the, the way it's shown. I think it's, I think it's appropriate. I think it's, I think we're small. All right. That kind of wraps up our discussion on amassing. I'd like to move on to circulation and access. We're going to break this down into two components, pedestrian first and then we'll get into vehicular. And so we're kind of talking about pedestrian access throughout the entire site. I'm not sure he wants to.
Mr. Chair, I have some comments and they're really involving pedestrian and vehicle and it's really the interface between the garden apartments and the parking garage. So if I understand correctly, then the garden apartments would park in the garage and their access would be on the southwest corner. Currently, it's shown as just a single sidewalk and it seems like because there's a 75 units or so, there's 74, I don't remember what the number is, that a more significant crossing area, maybe a gored out area, just to make sure that there was a safer pedestrian access. I'm also concerned that, you know, people being what they are, they will come up through the drive-in entrance to the garage and walk across that area. So I don't know that it's necessarily practical, but you know, even a landscaping barrier or something that kind of prevents walking in that direction. I'm also, it's going to become a, you know, kind of a neighborhood cut through. The pedestrian experience probably isn't as good as it could be, given that you're not, I mean, you couldn't wreck the fence high enough to keep people from cutting through there. So it may be better to go the opposite direction and try to make that more of a passe or something that really, not necessarily encourages, but certainly makes a trip through there a little bit more convenient and safer. And maybe by doing that, then it makes sense to, to use a barrier. So now you're setting up kind of almost like a pedestrian corridor and that serves both purposes. I also, I'm sure your traffic study will indicate, but it seems like one or the other of those, or maybe both of those exits from vehicle should be a left turn, left or right turn only back up to Detroit. So you're not funneling as much traffic up towards the residential street area. As far as the rest of the flow, I mean, from what I can see, it seems to work pretty well.
If I could build off, so just make sure I understand your comments, Mr. Sanderson. Your, so with regards to the alleyway and that sidewalk, you, you were kind of juggling, contemplating either having a full sidewalk, full on that north side of the street or making it so that you can't use that as a, as a, as a cut through.
Yeah, not a, not a sidewalk on the north side at all. I like the way it's set up, but enhance the, the passageway on the south side so that it is truly, because it's going to be a cut through.
I, I.
And then isolate the ability to come from the garage into the, the garden apartments community so that that just doesn't become like people walking across the driveway kind of situation. Coming out of the garage and walking.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree. I think if, you know, my, my initial instinct was I'd like to see sidewalks on both sides of the street, but then I go back to, you know, it's a narrow walkway. You've got lots of trees, it's, you're trying to line the garage and kind of screen a little bit with some trees, which I appreciate. So I think making that south circulation path, that south sidewalk, just really inviting lots of landscaping and make that a place that's enjoyable to, it will be used as a, as a cut through, you know, and so make that a nice inviting walkway.
I think, you know, maybe two other, two other suggestions, you know, make that, make that, you know, that cartway itself as narrow as possible so that you, you can do everything you need to do, but it doesn't feel like this big wide open space that's the easiest, you know, cut through to get through there and go quickly. Maybe, maybe two things you could do to accomplish that would either be, you know, speed table, you know, a speed table in there or maybe two, maybe one as, as the crosswalk. you know, a speed table in there, or maybe two, maybe one as, as the crosswalk itself from the garage to the garden apartments, and the other thing is just make that, make that tree lawn that's in there as wide as possible, and get in some real canopy trees that'll start to, like visually narrow that cartway. Those would be, I guess, my two comments on that.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful, I think with that direction, we can kind of explore some opportunities for this access point.
And I don't know if this is intentional, one of the site plans, I saw a mid-block crosswalk on Marlowe. Wasn't sure if that was intentional, I'm not sure how that would, how that would work, how that, what that would tie into on the other side of the street. It's not a typical thing that we have throughout Lakewood, and so I'm not sure drivers would know to slow down there, but, or did you use signage and so forth, I mean, is that an intentional crosswalk?
Yeah, I think just because of, of the access to the plaza from there, just to, to bring that flow of pedestrian traffic across, and, you know, what, what the appropriate kind of public improvement it is to do that in a safe manner, I think there's some options we can look at to, to see what that looks like and what that means.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I can appreciate that. Did you contemplate crosswalks at the, at the alleyway or the access drive there?
We, we have not, we can kind of include that in that study.
That was one of the comments that we have provided to the, to the applicants, we're continuing to review the plan, so we'll work through, there are some other comments we have on pedestrian connectivity, even on the north side of the garage, and how that connection is across from the clinic into the, into then wrapping around into the community space.
Go ahead, Mr. Reece.
Are you planning any pedestrian level lighting along, along the frontages on these two streets, or is it all going to be kind of the overhead stuff?
It, it depends, so typically in our infill developments, we like to keep kind of our, our, our building lighting to, to a minimum, especially out of respect to the neighbors. If we were to do kind of the non, which sounds like we're not going to, wider approach, there certainly could be elements there, where we have a little bit more space to, to do something creative. We can look at that, but we, you know, the, the ground floor units likely will have kind of a stoop light on them for that front door treatment, but we wouldn't want to get probably too aggressive on that, just out of respect to the neighborhood. And then within the plaza, I think that's a different conversation, and kind of up to the more commercial zone, so we, I'll only kind of with this board, but with other stakeholders are just starting those conversations of kind of, how does this plaza get programmed to support the most uses possible, so, like, I think that would be a, a key element to the feel of that.
I have one additional comment, and this is probably more directed towards the city than anything, but, you know, I would love to see a diagonal crosswalk at the intersection of Detroit and Bell, sometimes you'll see referred as pedestrian scramble, where all lights, you know, you're red in all direction and pedestrians are free to cross at any, to any corner, in any which way. And I don't, you know, I know this is a US route, so I don't know if that's something that's permitted, if that would be permitted under federal guidelines, but I think it would be interesting to look at, I cross this section, intersection frequently as a pedestrian, and it's always frustrating, the light timing and so forth is very frustrating, the way, just the way the streets don't kind of line up, so it'd be great to see if that, if that is permitted, to see if that's something that could be included in the traffic study, what they, then it would be an impact to the Detroit, the flow of traffic. But again, it just comes down to our priorities as a community. It would provide for better access to the Pike Park and- No further comments on pedestrian access? Let's move into talk about vehicular access. I think it'd be, I think it would be appropriate, we kind of touched on it a little bit, but can we just, can you just go through each building and where the, where the service points are for each building, loading, unloading, our trash collection, service points?
See if I can, please, their point, so currently, we're, we've located some amount of enclosed, trash enclosure in this area here with some kind of connectivity, or trying to use that roof for the covered walkway to sort of lessen the visual impact of that, clearly, but from an access perspective, it seems to make sense coming off of that drive and its proximity to potential retail uses that are going to need commercial trash pickup. And then we started to study possible, if there was like a, a loading zone in one of these spaces over here, not so much loading zone, but like a pull off, and then, you know, could we create an internalized service area within this section of building where you could pull a dumpster out and load there, if, if you had a commercial kitchen or something in this area, you know, they're not going to want to try and haul all their stuff all the way down there, so that, that's what we started to look at, obviously, as we move forward, we, we try to engage with potential trash haulers to, to vet some of those options. I think residentially, we haven't really studied it too much, I think probably the logical, obviously, the, the building that's engaged at the curse block, if there's some kind of trash strategy over here, I think that would get tied into this residential building. I think the building to the south, we probably look to service off of this drive, I think, rather than have it happening on Marlowe, and I think probably that would be the strategy for the walk-up or garden units as well, I think it would somehow be serviced off of this drive, but these are sort of smaller scale, I don't know if there's a centrally located sort of rollout thing or something that happens somewhere, you know, either in the corner of this, you know, along this edge and this edge, where it's sort of less public, and can be taken out fairly easily by commercial trash pickup to, to that drive. And, you know, the, if these are sort of for sale, they'd probably just have to pull out their bins to, to the sidewalk like everybody else on whatever, Tuesday or Thursday, I don't, can't remember what day it is on the street, mine's Wednesday.
For the residential, do you envision those trash receptibles and recycling receptibles being interior and on the inside of the building, those get pulled out from the building, or is it a dumpster sitting on the outside of the building that the, the truck backs up to?
I think it'd be interior for the larger buildings, I think potentially it could, could be bins that are sort of within a, some kind of enclosed or fenced area that residents could walk to and-
We, we have a few projects, kind of similar conditions as far as an infill project, and we do utilize kind of trash rooms and rollout bins, it becomes a property management function, so likely as, as this evolves and kind of the central building, we'll try to isolate a, a room to accommodate that, for that quadrant.
All right, that's good, and I know this is kind of getting outside of vehicular circulation and access, but it is, how do, how do these buildings get serviced from vehicles? One comment with regards to the trash and recycling placement to serve Building A along the walkway, you may want to consider doing something internal to the building there as well, I think having, having your trash collection at your main route, your main walkway to and from that building, and your main access point to the plaza and the rest of the site. Your visitors' first experience when they, when they visit the site on a hot summer day.
The only other comment that I would have is the, the curb cuts to both the seven townhouses and on the northern side to the, the northern entrance into the garage, just minimizing those, those distances as, to be as small as you can, you know, for the townhouses, I don't think you need more than 18 to 20, I wouldn't want to see a full 24, and then on the northern side, I know there's commercial uses that have to get in there, but, you know, I think 20 to 22 is still probably an appropriate number, don't want to see those be too wide.
Fire department will require a minimum of 20 feet, even on the, on the townhome portion, because there are four units attached, so it's technically considered commercial, so we're looking at at least a minimum of 20, but the points won't take.
I have a few more vehicular circulation access comments, some of these are more geared for the city, questions of the city to explore or consider. One would be loading zones for apartments, I mean, the reality is people are going to be coming and going every month, and so where, where are they parking their moving, moving vans, you know, how does that work, or how are they accessing it, is there, is there reserved spaces in front of each building specifically for loading and unloading? And kind of part and parcel to that, any thought, you know, the, the city should consider, you know, reaching out to Lyft and Uber, they do have programs to allow communities to identify designated rideshare pickup zones, drop off zones, I'm not sure that's something we've ever done before, I know curb space is at a premium, but something to consider, maybe that could also be reserved for also for loading and unloading for apartment buildings or moving, move-in day. And then one last comment is, is have you had any thoughts on an integrated covered bus stop? There is a, if I, my memory serves me correctly, there is a bus stop at the, along Detroit there for Route 20, I think it's the 26. Any, any thoughts on that?
So that's something we would typically coordinate with RTA to determine if that's a space where they have enough ridership that they would want in covered bus stop. Currently, that one has not been on their, their list for us to consider, but that conversation's also been happening in the timeframe that the hospital has been not in operation, so something we'll, we'll kind of have a conversation with RTA, is, is also, given the development plan that we're, we're looking at right now, is, is that still the right place to have it? Should, should it move on the block, should maybe move off the block or just, just on either side? So those are conversations we'll pick up with RTA, since it's their route.
I think it's a great, I mean, if, if the, if the RTA does determine that one is warranted in this block, in the vicinity of this block, I think it's a tremendous opportunity to do something with the, with the public artist, engage public art, you know, and, and make it really warm and inviting and integrate nicely with the development, not one of their standard, something similar to what's, what was done along Clifton for the 55. Any other thoughts on vehicular access? Okay, let's move, I think we're about halfway through, so, hopefully a little bit more than halfway through. All right, let's get into, to parking.
I think they have plenty of parking.
Plenty of parking.
There's 600 spaces in that garage, I, I, you know, this is a, this is a, this is a city that likes to walk, and so I think, you know, the, the addition of those, you know, nearly 600 spaces, the curb spaces that are going to be provided, I, I, it's my least favorite thing to talk about.
What is the purpose of the parking behind Building A, kind of along the vicinity of the, the service access, right there? What is, what are those?
I, I think it was really just probably for some, some guest parking for the, for the office user, you know, the, the office and retail uses are kind of driving a lot of that parking demand, and as much as, you know, we would love to say that parking doesn't matter for the residential, even in our most urban infill projects, parking is always an issue. So I, I think we are sized appropriately, perhaps a little aggressively on the residential, but that, that office need, and that's kind of one of those dominos, if we add 20,000 square feet, that's a lot of parking spaces that are, are going to get in demand, so that's kind of the analysis we're going through right now. If, if that, those spaces behind Building A prove to be a better opportunity for something else, you know, we certainly could explore those, but to your point, those could be good opportunities for kind of shared use designations, but really, you know, ultimately, the, the residential users are going to be driving the volume on that, so kind of where they are with their phone and that GPS location is where that driver's going to go.
I would, I would just like to comment that, you know, those would be, at least some of those would be an excellent ADA, because even if you have ADA in the garage, if you have mobility challenges, even if it's a long distance, it's just as bad as not having the space, so, but, you know, there could be other opportunities around the perimeter of the site, but really, it's as close to the plaza as you can get would be my preference.
Parking is certainly a polarizing subject, it's my understanding that there's also, there's some sort of agreement with the Cleveland Clinic with regards to providing additional spaces as part of the settlement, is that correct?
That is correct, so as part of the master agreement between the clinic, the foundation, and the city, there's also, there is requirement to provide 75 spaces on the site, that are currently provided onsite through the, there's, it's the emergency department parking lot at the south end. As part of the redevelopment of the property, those spaces will move from there into the garage. We have been tasked in working with the Cleveland Clinic to see if there are other opportunities to, to place those spaces offsite. We, we, we had that, we initiated that conversation this week, we had, we actually had, we initiated the conversation a while ago, we actually had a chance to sit down with them for the first time, just yesterday. We had a good conversation, but there's, there's a lot of decisions that, and thought process that haven't, we haven't worked through yet, so, whereas of right now, yes, there's 75 spaces in the garage, for the foreseeable future, those 75 spaces are still getting renamed in the garage, we're looking at all the options, that may or may not exist.
Are you looking at all, like, the INA building seems to be underutilized, that garage behind the INA building, the garage north of the, one Lakewood?
Yeah, there's been pretty specific, there was some, a lot of thought that went into the parking lease agreement that we have, that limits where the 75 spaces can be relocated, specifically actually excluded going north of Detroit, so that's part of the conversation, too, is let's just, the, the four corners of the agreement say one thing, let's talk about this, though, with a broad brush, and we're, we're starting from scratch, and what can we possibly do with these? Yes, the Cleveland Clinic has, will, will be a renter within those spaces, so there'll be some revenue, but it does not, it does not, there's a, there's, there's a gap between what they're paying in rent and what it costs to build these spaces, so it's, the project's benefit to try to move them elsewhere, but work through that.
I have one more comment, you can go to the north side of Marlowe, and I don't know, maybe this is just graphically, or just not showing it, but there's no on-street parking extended, and there's just a strange bump out, where that, on, on Marlowe, right there, that green tree, there's kind of the, the bump out there, and then there, you're not showing any on-street parking north of that. I think, if my memory serves me correctly, there is, there's probably about six or seven spaces there now, is that intentional to eliminate those spaces, or is it just, just didn't make its way onto the, onto the site plan?
I don't want to speak for Ted, but, I mean, we're certainly open to, to adding that, if permitted, but-
You're probably trying to hold that corner.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know that we're averse to that, perhaps we were, we're assuming there'd be some amount of loading or sort of non, like, consistent parking there, and then we were sort of starting the run of street parking south of that sort of landscape piece, but I, I, that, I don't think we've sort of delved too deeply into that, and certainly could look at alternatives. Obviously, you don't want too much parking too close to the corner, but we could, they could probably handle additional space and/or accommodate servicing and preserving the space to the south.
Any other comments on parking? Okay, let's, I want to touch on landscaping and screening, I know that we need to get into, we're not getting into materials or things, it's more like under ABR's purview, and, and obviously part of more of the final review, but just generally speaking, in terms of separation of uses and screening of service areas, any discussion on landscaping and screening? I'm curious, are you, are you contemplating a fence along the south order of the, of the development?
We have not discussed a fence. We would be open to a fence. Fences like parking sometimes are well received, sometimes they are not. So I think that's probably a discussion with that neighbor and coming up with the right solution.
I believe the neighbor might actually have a fence there.
Yeah, our hope, our hope is that you would work, like you said, work with those neighbors, find out what works for them.
Yep.
Within our fence, within our ordinance for fences, staying within those requirements. Then yeah, just broadly, I guess my comment is just to be, just be really thoughtful in your, in your, how your screening access to the, you know, dumpster areas and so forth as you work through the plan. Urban open spaces, let's talk about the plaza first. And I think you've differentiated, I think I saw somewhere where you've got, you've considered the Lakewood Public Plaza to be what's shown in the tan, the tan color there. And then the green space to the east of building A on the south, that, I think you're referring to that as the muse, is that correct?
Correct.
We could probably take those pieces, those two pieces together, let's talk about, and then we can get on, get into some of the other open spaces. But take those two pieces together.
So on some of this, if I could just interject for a second, there's, there's probably a lot of questions on details about what are the materials? How are we going to, what are the water features? Are they something that's interactive? Play feature, but concerned as a play feature for kids. Those are a lot of things that we'll figure out as we get deeper into it. Those big picture items that you want us to consider, those are important to know right now. And I'll give you an example. As part of our city council conversations, there's a lot of discussion about what happens up here at the frontage. What should that be? Right now, there's a raised landscape bed, and you've seen that in some of the previous renderings. Actually, at the city council meetings, it had a lot of trees in it. Well, how that was perceived, those we were trying to, it felt like that we were creating an edge there, a hard edge that didn't feel very inviting to pull people into the space. It almost felt like you had to be invited back into the space as a, as a customer for the business or whatever. So in response to that, the trees were removed, most of the trees were removed, there's still one tree in there. But there's still some question about what, and I think Mr. McDermott, his comments even question whether there should be any type of, of raised plantar there or not. Maybe that should just go away entirely. Of course, that raises some questions about defensibility and hardening of some of those edges. There's lots of ways we could do that without having a, a landscape bed. But those are, that's an example of some, some big level changes or things that we should think about right now. That'll help direct, and we can, we can figure out what the landscape and the materials and the other stuff looks like in the future. But those are some big, big, big items to, to think about as an example.
Great, thanks. I, I agree.
Yeah, I guess, I, I know, I've been thinking about that space a lot. I really appreciated the, the shadow diagrams that you gave us to show us what that plaza is going to feel like at the, at the different times of year. It is going to be kind of an intimate space. It's not, it's not, I mean, it's large, but it's not enormous. It's not like the one that's at intro. And so I, you know, the, across the street at Forage, that plaza kind of has, has a, has a feel that's pretty hardscape, but it's got some nice trees, but it doesn't feel particularly inviting if you're not, if, you know, if you're not using that space for, you know, the restaurant or, or whatever. You know, to me, it's kind of that building A, if there's a way to like, I don't know, chamfer that corner or something, just to make it, to pull, to pull you in a little bit more from the street. There's just, there's, there is something a little bit missing about the interaction between Detroit and the plaza. And I'm not sure, I, I'm not skilled enough to, to figure out what it is, but, but I can kind of feel it in the plan. So I guess, I guess I don't, I don't have an answer, but I do maybe like to see a diff, a couple of different options that, that you'd be comfortable with as a developer on how to do that.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Reese, as far as the, of building A, and we discussed it a little bit during the massing discussion, but finding a way to open it up even a little bit further would be, I would like to see something that opens it up for the street a little bit more.
Having formerly lived on Detroit in a residence and having a tree in front of our house obliterated by a drunken driver, I am particularly sensitive to having a, a solid separation. So not necessarily planter, but trees change of grade, steps. It's important because you, you can't figure out what happens when something goes crazy.
That's good. Something I hadn't even considered, so that's a good, good thing. I think broadly, my comments for the plaza, to me, it just has, so it has a very corporate feel to it. It doesn't at all feel like it's inviting and community oriented, you know, the fountains and the, it just feels, could be, you could take, pick this up in places somewhere in, in New York City or downtown Cleveland, and it's got a very corporate feel. And you, you've got the main interest of building A at the end of it. I'm not opposed to that being there, but it just, it seems like it's serving the, the, the office tenants. And, you know, I want this to be a place, the community is putting, will be putting a significant amount of resources into this development. And I want this to be a place that's open and accessible to all. And I think that would include, you know, having some interactive features for families. And, you know, it's not, it's, I don't think it'd be appropriate to have playground equipment here, but you can do things with, with rocks and natural features that would, you know, I envision, you know, a, a couple of mothers meeting for some coffee and having their kids climbing over some rocks and something, sitting on the plaza enjoying some coffee, and they're climbing the rocks. Like some, some sort of interactive feature, maybe, and maybe those water features isn't a static. Thank you. The sun's shining directly in my eyes, so. Thanks for closing that. But having, having, you know, maybe, maybe it's a water feature. I know those are expensive to put in and expensive to maintain, but a splash, some sort of a splash plan, something that, something that draws and attracts families here to spend their money and spend time here and meet and have this be a gathering place, I think is important. And that being said, I recognize that you have to strike that balance between what you're showing here, what you've demonstrated. This could be a flexible space that can be used for all kinds of different events, and I, I appreciate that. And that's the advantage of having that hard surface. But at the same time, finding that balance where it's, it's soft and inviting for just kind of the, the day-to-day stuff, you know, is, I think equally important, so. You know, and, and maybe, and I, I don't know, the, the muse space, I don't know. I know, I saw a rendering that shows that being kind of like a transitional space as you transition from the parking garage, kind of inviting you into the plaza, there's some landscaping, and it's, it's nice. But maybe, I, I don't know, maybe there's a way to activate that space. It's kind of tucked away and hidden on the site, you know, finding a way to activate that space or put something there that's going to draw people there that, you know, can get eyes there and not just be a really, really wide walkway.
Mr. Chair, one of the, when we got to that space, you know, it, that space feels maybe like it's about the width of the Eastman Reading Garden downtown. And if you've ever walked through that space, it is probably the most lovely public space that we have in the city from, you know, the way that it feels inside. And, and so maybe, maybe there's something from, from that space that could, you know, be incorporated or, or inspired to do that space.
That's a good idea.
Mr. Chair, I, I think one of the, maybe Sean or somebody said this before, but I think having some permanent seating elements so that it just doesn't end up in the wintertime being a bunch of chairs stacked up under a tarp. I mean, that's a real danger when you have that outdoor programming, when, you know, when it's cold and you're not out there. So intermixing some permanent seating or other spaces where, you know, you are invited to be there even if the weather's not that great. Or that you don't feel like you have to buy a drink to sit.
Right, yep. Yeah, that's a good point. And I think, I think, I think having that mix is important. Having the, having movable furniture that's not specifically reserved for a specific restaurant operator, but that is intended to be used in your gathering and you can grab, bring over a chair. There's been all kinds of studies, urban planning studies on, on the, just the benefit of having movable, flexible seating. I know it becomes a maintenance issue, keeping track of that, that furniture and making sure it's sturdy and can hold up to it. But I think that's, but then again, balancing that with some fixed seating as well, kind of year-round seating.
Mr. Reese, you mentioned a, a public space. That was a good example. We, we missed what that was. What was that public space?
Oh, the Eastman Reading Garden. It's downtown between the, the new library and the old library.
Yeah, and I think you, you hit the nail on the head with kind of the objective is, is how do we incorporate all those elements in a thoughtful manner and still leave enough space and flexibility to accommodate the wide variety of programming and events that we'd like to see year-round in the space? So we, we appreciate that feedback and we have, you know, reached out to other stakeholders to kind of get their feedback on, on what they'd want to see there for various programming. So this, this will continue to, to evolve as we move forward.
Let's talk briefly about utilities. And I think this would include stormwater management. Your thoughts on, have you thought through, you know, fulfilling those requirements, stormwater control? Where bioswales or underground storage tanks or what's that?
Yeah, and currently, the plan was to handle, for the most part, our stormwater in kind of a ramp vault within the garage. You know, there were some opportunities to go above and beyond those requirements in that greenway along the garage. We'd like to, from a location standpoint, we think it works out well. We'd like to, to stay out of the plaza as much as we can for the reasons we just said, to not kind of handcuff it because of what's below it. So that, that's where we currently have a plan, but that also has to go through the city staff. And we, we, I'm not even sure that we've shared that with, with Mark yet, but that was our last study was putting it into the, to a vault under the ramp in the garage.
Any thoughts on EV stations now or expansion in the future, adding more?
Yep.
Is that technology?
Yep, no, it's, it's something we're doing pretty regularly. We, we would like to partner with an entity to have public stations. We do wire, even if we have private garages within buildings, we do wire them for, to, to support EV stations for fast charges. And then it becomes kind of a tenant upgrade and we work with the tenant individually. But it is something that is now, you know, kind of customary in our analysis for parking.
Are the, are the, are the poles along Detroit going to stay? Are you guys going to do anything with those?
You know, I don't believe we have discussed those specifically, but that's a great point. I, you know, obviously, I, we haven't engaged whoever's living on that pole with what they'd want to see. But it probably is up to their willingness to participate.
Any thoughts on public wifi?
That's a great point as well for the plaza. We, we do try to wire our buildings for that and the various kind of community spaces. But for the plaza, that would obviously be a tremendous asset for people to be able to kind of hang out there on a pleasant day and get connected and work outside.
Discussion on utilities? Okay. Discuss amenities. This section of the code, eleven fifty-six oh five M, talks about amenities may include but are not limited courtyard, swimming pool, spa, clubhouse, hot lot with play equipment, picnic shelter, barbecue area, parking facilities such as tennis, basketball, or racquetball, or child daycare facilities. I'm not sure is the, that piece, the way it's written in the code, is that intended for those amenities available to tenants of, on the site? The way I kind of interpret it.
I'm trying to pull up the code while talking. What was that? It was eleven fifty-six oh?
Eleven fifty-six oh five M.
So generally, yes, that's, that's amenities for, for the residents, not necessarily something that's, that's publicly owned and maintained.
And that, that pool that you're showing with the garden apartments, would that be accessible, would that be available to all of the tenants on the site?
To all the multifamily tenants.
Almost, yep. Is that something that the town, for sale townhomes would have?
We have discussed having an agreement with, with those folks to, to have access to it and whatever other amenity might be programmed for the ground floor of that building as well.
And what are those, some other items being contemplated there?
So in this scenario, that ground floor, which is kind of the, the central square, will have really right now a huge thing that we have to, to, to work with is, is package delivery. And that's kind of evolved into cold storage for grocery delivery, and that takes up a lot of space. So that is not quite an amenity, but certainly is included in, in that package now. Beyond our leasing function, what we typically do is kind of a, a flexible space that is quasi kind of co-working, but also has kind of a coffee bar, depending on the tenant base, it may have an actual bar. But it's really for the, the private enjoyment of the tenants to come in and use as, as they see fit. And it's flexible enough for them to adjust it accordingly. So that's kind of what that space is. You know, we, we have looked at, you know, do you, do you sacrifice some units for some raised amenity areas? That'd be more in that building one. There are some opportunities, we think, to, to do that. We, we did that in Ohio City and it turned out very well. But that is always kind of a tricky analysis of sacrificing a unit for a kind of raised community space. And we, and we think the plaza.
That would be a reservable, you could, your tenant, you could reserve the space for a Super Bowl party or something, or birthday party.
It depends. We let that kind of happen organically. Some, you know, you know, I think in a smaller project, that's easier to manage. In some larger projects, if you make it reservable, it becomes an issue. But usually in a smaller project, it can kind of manage itself organically with the staff. So we don't want it to make it that's booked all the time and then no one gets to use it. So if we had the opportunity, it's large enough, like we did at Dexter, it's kind of two spaces. So people can, several groups of people can be there at the same time. You don't necessarily have to reserve it. There's several kind of opportunities to engage with your own private group while others are there as well.
I think that's a great use of that space. Would activate the plaza certainly. Any other further comments on the amenities? I don't know where to park public art because I don't think it fits nicely into eleven fifty-six, but I think we've already addressed that. There's, you would partner with local artists.
Yeah, and I think if, you know, if that doesn't happen along Bell and we're just, you know, focusing on some other prominent corners and within the plaza, again, we identify where we think those best locations are, kind of formalize an RFP with the public, you know, with our local art partner and, and kind of issue it through that method.
I like the idea of the interactive dynamic art, it's kind of.
Yeah.
Other comment on amenities? So I just want to touch on this real quick to see if there's any comments, but there's, I kind of separated out the more final review elements, building materials, streetscape improvements, signage, lighting, traffic. Are there anything in your review of this that would be appropriate to address at this time as part of the preliminary review? I didn't have anything.
No, I think you're right that those are things that need to come later.
I think the only, again, comment on traffic is some serious thought about how you come in and out of the project and which direction you turn and minimize the impact to the neighborhood, which again, I'm sure the traffic study will give suggestions.
What's the, I did, we discussed this briefly at the May seventeenth meeting, and I would still like to see that, what that scope includes.
We've had conversations, the traffic engineers reached out and given us a list of questions. We've provided some responses. I think we still have it's out for staff review. So once we have those final comments, we'll get that back to the traffic engineer. They will then provide us their MOU or their scope of work. You had asked that we share that with you. We will do that. It may have to happen. We'll have to figure that out with, with Assistant Chief Director Wallow about how do we, how do we handle that? If it is between meetings, just for timing purposes. But we are working on that, and so we've identified some intersections we want to have analyzed. We'll of course still want to analyze these access points in and out of the site, just as, as an example. This point right here actually has opposing lefts, so we need to think through some of these things a little bit. But we'll get that to you as soon as we have it, but we've, we've started the conversation.
It's just a challenge, I know it's a, it's a very challenging, it's a, it's a, it's a less than ideal time of year to be doing a traffic study with school not being in session and with, with Lakewood not busing. It's, you know, I walk down. It's, you know, I walk down Franklin in this vicinity regularly during, at three o'clock, and it's, it's a zoo. And I just want to make sure that we're capturing the right intersections and that falls on. And I, I know you probably have some historical data on that that you can provide, but we really need to look long and hard at that.
Yeah, we have some historical data from pre-pandemic, so it's actually probably even better data than, than where we are right now. There's also ways, and part of this traffic analysis, that they can, they can, they can model into the school traffic based on some of that historical data. So yes, it's ideal to do traffic studies in the fall or when school's in session, but we know it's not always possible, so there's ways to account for that and make sure that it's accurate or represented in the modeling.
That's, and, and the reason I think the traffic study is so important, this is, that's the one piece. I mean, obviously, anybody using this plaza is going to be affected by this, but the traffic is the one piece that's going to affect probably several blocks in either, in either direction, not just the neighbors of the community, the city, or the development. So I think it's really important that we look, I think we owe that to the residents to look closely.
I suspect what we'll find as we look at the total traffic counts of hospitals versus where we are today, we're actually probably quite a bit less traffic. But the traffic's going to flow differently because it's a different type of population that's on the site. So that's what we're looking to understand.
If I could just want, just to add on to a comment, assuming that you had some kind of linear park along the parking garage. I did like also pushing the sidewalk out to the parking because having that tree lawn there and having parking along that tree lawn is not, not a good situation. So it's kind of like the one way or the other, but.
Yep.
Right, any further comments, discussion? Do you have any questions of us, anything you want clarification on based on our feedback today?
I, I don't think so.
Ted or?
Nope, I think we're, we're good. We appreciate the feedback, it's very helpful.
All right, we technically need a deferral, is that incorrect? Is there a motion to defer?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reese, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Extentions?
One extension.
Motion carries, deferral, we'll see you hopefully next month.
All right, thank you.
So for the public that remains, just so you know, the next meeting is actually scheduled for the week of the 4th of July. I think we've confirmed that it'll probably be, the meeting will be moved to June 29th, which I think is a Wednesday. So we'll send out the same notices we sent for this meeting, but just know that we normally meet on the first Thursday of the month, but because of the 4th of July holiday, we'll be meeting a week earlier on a Wednesday. So we'll, we'll make sure that's clear to everybody as we move forward.
Great, thank you. And, and by all means, anybody from the public on this, it's so important that we get your feedback. And so, you know, by all means, after you've had a chance to hear some of these things and digest them, send us, send us, send, send the planning staff an email, they'll, they'll make sure we get it. And, you know, come to, come to the next meeting, talk to the developer, stay engaged. It's so important to have, have everybody's voices heard. It leads to a better product, I think. So thank you so much for those who came up, especially on this site.